No disrespect, I just love it.
Okay, you have the vote for everyone's and training board, March 5th? We've got kind of shortage out there tonight, so we shouldn't go along and steal here. Would you join our pledge of allegiance?
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Bishani.
Here.
Mr. Jardina.
Here.
Mr. Kossel.
Yes.
Mr. Malka.
Here.
Mr. Mixal.
Present.
Mr. Artuso.
Here.
Mrs. Lawman.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Okay, let's see. The first one is actually the Liker subdivision, which was 1854. Lake Road, that thing has been tabled to the April 16th.
April 9th.
Also the Volatara.
April 9th.
What did it say?
16th.
That's what it says. April 9th is 40 or something, isn't it?
No, April 7th is 40.
April 7th is 40. Okay, why is it tabled to the 16th? All right, whatever, it's tabled to the April 8th. Sorry, we were going to have.
No, I did, but I thought this said the 16th.
You're missing yet, you're good.
All right, I'm sorry. You lose my thought.
That's April 9th.
That next planning board meeting, how's that? All right, we're good at that. All right, and so the, again, the Volatara has been also here. So that leaves us with Popeyes, Giuliana Salon, and Admiralty Way Pool. Mark, go ahead and read them off.
Okay, Popeyes Restaurant located directly south of 925 Hard Road, the African Liberty Restaurant Development, is requesting preliminary final site plan approval along with a public hearing associated with the construction of a 2,532 square foot restaurant with double drive-through lanes on a 1.198 acre parcel located in a high-intensity commercial district under sections 269-11 and 350-19 of the code of the Town of Webster.
And is anyone here from Popeyes?
Yes, sir.
I just had a question. It says directly south of 925 Hard Road. Will that be west? It should be west of Hard Road.
Well, it's to the south of the property located at 925.
Oh, all right, okay, all right.
Yes, sir. Good evening, my name is Brett Steenbergh. I'm the engineer for the applicant Liberty Restaurants Development. Their proposal for Popeyes Restaurant located at 929 Hard Road. The, since we were here last, we've gone through a couple of round of comments through the town designated engineer. We also went to the zoning board of appeals to request relief from the, from the parking guideline or from the parking requirements, which, the parking requirements for this site would have required 202 parking spaces for the restaurant. We have 24 parking spaces proposed for the 24-seat restaurant with the double drive-through. The, the zoning board of appeals requested one minor addition to the plan, and that would be the inclusion to show some, where we have snow storage there, some bank parking spaces, if necessary, if I think that parking spaces are full. Every time I go to one of these restaurants, the parking is empty, the drive-through is full. It just seems to be the way, the fast food trend seems to be going in the United States, especially post-COVID. I would rather leave that area green than, than pave it and have vacant parking spaces. The zoning board of appeals tended to agree, so we, but we did include showing an additional 10 bank parking spaces along the site there. The latest round of comments from the town designated engineer dated February 20th, we addressed those and sent those back in. They were, they were late coming in because, it was actually, we responded to as quickly as we could from March, or February 20th, and I think we sent that back in on the 23rd. But there's a response letter, I can go through responses if you'd like, or we can, I don't know if they had time to review them. But basically, most of it was minor technical issues. The first one, being advised in the area of disturbance on the plans. If you did that, the only area, we're not including being disturbed, being the area of the existing stormwater management basin, which will leave undisturbed, and the area of the loop road that runs around the back of the site, and there's actually property extends to the other side of that, so. And so we did, we did address that. The one comment we were, we were unable to, to address is he requested we get a fire flow test from Monroe County Water Authority, and this would be the second time we've requested the information. What Monroe County has provided me with is, which is an interpolation based on their model of the water height in their tank and what the flow rates would be for a hydrant in that area. Really, looking at their data, they have more than enough pressure to sustain any fire flow or any necessary fire flow conditions for the hydrants there based on that. And when I, when I responded back to her this, this last time, she said that you can assume that that information, Chelsea said that you can assume that information inaccurate, we don't do flow tests. We won't be doing the flow tests out there, so. But other than that, I believe we addressed everything else. Added a note to the plan that the applicant would provide a letter of credit for the cost of sidewalk along the frontage since that's required as part of zoning requirements. I know there was some discussions here last time. If we do provide a sidewalk somewhere else, or how we'd be handling that, because there's no sidewalks in that area. The applicant has agreed to provide a letter of credit for, since 100 and, I forget how many feet of sidewalk along the frontage line of 118 feet, 119 feet of Hard Road. So that'll be provided as, as part of the application. The, there were a couple of signs, and I think this board had raised a concern regarding the removal of the signs, the "Love That Chicken" and Louisiana Famous Chicken. The applicants agreed to remove those signs. I did note them on the conceptual elevations. When, once we get site plan approved, we'll engage with the architect to do the final plans. That'll be reflected in the final plans, the building department gets to issue a building permit. The did raise a question about the, the neon chicken on the east face of the building. We would ask that that remain. We're trying, the applicant, unfortunately, being a franchisee, is kind of under some limitations, and any of these changes, they have to go back to corporate because corporate needs a certain branding. We would just request that that remain. And I did, you know, go around, you know, McDonald's has two or three of the golden arches around their building. Colonel Sanders is pretty apparent, Kentucky Fried Chicken over there. So this is something that is typical in their branding for Popeyes. So we respectfully asked that the board allow that, that to be constructed as design. And we went over the bank parking. The rest of the changes were mostly minor changes. Changing the pipe from SDR 26 to SDR 21, which we've done. The labeling, the detail of the manhole, how we're making the manhole connection to the sanitary sewer. Adding labels to the cleanouts. And, you know, just some of the sanitary sewer testing notes, which we would be satisfactorily addressed. So I think from a, from an engineering review and a technical review standpoint, I think we should be in good shape. And I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have at this time.
With regards to the sign, you're talking about the chicken?
The chicken, yeah.
The cell, what about the sign next to it, the spells that were chicken? Because that was one of the issues that was raised the last time.
Ah, yeah.
Is that gone or is that staying?
Which one, the spells that were chicken? If you're looking at the front elevation, you're looking at Popeyes, and you see the brain chicken there, then just to the left of that, like drive-through or?
Oh, the, ah, look at the, look, bring up the front elevation, I don't believe they even.
It's right there.
No, that will not be there.
Yeah.
That, that is not even a show on the site plan. That's actually a median island that goes between the pass-by lane and the drive-through lanes. We found through experience that it just causes problems with snow blowing in the northeast. It worked well in the south where they don't get any snow, but that will not be included on the site plan.
I, I don't really think the proposed rooster, chicken, or whatever it is there, is really all that there. It's, it's their trademark there, it's nothing big, obnoxious or anything like that.
No, and I might get vertical.
Right? Break it up a little bit. You guys okay with that?
Oh, yeah.
All right. All right, Popeyes is on top, you got the mason there in front, you got the, with the side. On the side, where you took out, you know, Love That Chicken?
Yeah.
What, what are those windows there? Question that, would look like?
Those, they're actually just decorative shutters, is all they are. And that actually is the freezer compartment there. And, you know, rather than making it look like a freezer, they want to make it look like it's part of the building and integrated into the building. They've gone through a couple of different designs, but this is what they've, they've gone, been going with on the new design.
Okay, now what, with the bioretention in the front, what, what was the outcome of all that?
We did an analysis on the bioretention out front, and what we found is it was designed initially for a certain amount of impervious area. When Taco Bell was constructed, they constructed a substantial portion of the bioretention basin. And it had a significantly less impervious area than what was assumed on that parcel. And when we combined the two areas and went, and backed through the bioretention design calculations, the amount of impervious area that's proposed for both Popeyes and the existing Taco Bell, it has, the, the bioretention basin has adequate capacity to treat the stormwater, to both treat and provide the runoff reduction volumes for the stormwater from those locations.
You, in lieu of that, you've got landscaping.
We, we did add some additional landscaping out front, as you had requested, just to kind of mimic the existing bioretention landscaping as it moves down in front of the site.
Yep. Who else, lighting, all, anything as well?
Evidence downlet, we did provide the town with an isolum and diagram showing the lighting levels, not exceeding, you know, basically not going over the property lines and, and maintaining, you know, the recommended limits for parking lots.
And one final one, and it was your dumpster enclosure, that's masonry?
That's masonry, yeah.
And what is it, is it essentially plain simple?
It's, it actually matches the building very well. It looks just like the building. It, it looks just like the building finishes. They do it, they designed it to, to basically look like. Because many times, sometimes we tuck it right in behind the building, almost attach the building. So we wanted it to look, and to look like it's part of the design rather than something that was added on after.
Okay, anybody any questions or concerns or?
With 24 parking spaces, how many employees were you averaging at the time?
Typically, the staff is about eight employees, and we have 24 seats in the restaurant. My rule of thumb is one space per three seats plus one for each employee in the max shift, which puts you at about 16 spaces. We're, we're at 24 spaces, which exceeds that, that a little bit, which I think the zoning board of appeals was happy to see that.
We did give a letter from the, from the zoning board in regards to the banking.
Yes.
Parking space, I don't think we should have a problem with that. We've done it before in other projects where it just comes along and, and I can't even recall one where we had to say, geez, you gotta dig it up and convert it to parking, it's always work.
It's, and I'll be honest with you, 24, I, I've done these, these buildings with as little as 18 parking spaces, and I have not seen a problem as of yet. Like I said, the fast food customer seems to be going more towards, that's why we have a double drive-through, because it seems to be going more to that drive-through traffic. I think, you know, COVID played a part in that. I think people are just living their lives a little faster than they used to some days, so.
Do you have tables outside so people can eat outside if they want?
We do not, no.
Paul, you guys are all set with engineering? Most of this, all the comments are engineering details.
Yeah, it's just the, the one comment, the hearing, the fire flow.
Yep.
Providing trash with a recommended note for the approval.
If, if it's something this board, I, I have the equipment. I just need somebody to open the hydrant and to drive up the novelty and take care of it if necessary. I, I feel confident that the data probably is, is accurate enough, but whatever, we can add.
Yeah, the water authority won't allow anybody on the outside.
I figure they probably wouldn't.
But I have talked to the water authority and the, the curve that was provided to you was inaccurate.
She sent me a new curve tonight, actually, so.
So we would like to have a fire flow test required before signature and just put that on the approval.
Okay, and is that, they'll do that after hearing from you? They'll do a fire flow test, or?
Just let them know that it was a requirement.
Okay, I just said, tried to work, yeah, do what we can to get this.
I'll send them an email to Merle.
I appreciate that.
I know that was.
We'll, we'll, we'll leave that as part of engineering approvals. You know, that's something you guys can figure out and build for your work.
Absolutely, I'll.
I have an editor in my heart.
All right, okay, sounds good, thank you.
All right.
The only question I got is, I know the last of the north had the two tramways tying into this project, but is there actually an access agreement to go through the parking lot?
Yes, it actually all is under one ownership. That's all, they're land leases. So it's a division of Wyandwaters that owns all of those parcels. So they have permission, and that's why that access was placed at that point.
I almost think that was part of the approval for what?
It was, the road was stubbed there, was it?
It was stubbed, it was stubbed right to the property line, yes. But actually makes for a nice layout.
Peggy, do you have any concerns on it? You okay with it? All right, anybody else?
No.
Okay, that's that. It's a little easy. All right, I think we've addressed all our, all our questions, I went through the minutes, and everything I had highlighted, he already brought back up. Addressed them all, so you were right.
Public area?
What's that?
Public area.
It is a public area, yes, too. And anyone here wishing to speak in regard to this project? And that's Ian Allen, and then the clause, the public area, I'm bringing it back to the board. Derek, what do you have?
Motion for an unlisted action. The Town of Webster planning board considered a request by applicant Liberty Restaurant Development to construct a 2,532 square foot restaurant with double drive-through lanes located at 925 Hard Road on 1.19 acre parcel, having SPO number 079.1 on Tatch 1, Tatch 12. The planning board determines that the proposed action is an unlisted action. The planning board determined that the action is subject to signal agency review pursuant to part 617.6b4 of SEER, and that it is the most appropriate agency for making a determination of significance. The planning board therefore designates itself lead agency to the proposed act. The planning board has given consideration to the criteria for determining significance set forth in section 617.7c1 of SEER. It has one considered information contained in the short environmental assessment form in part one dated January 17th, 2024. Number two, considered public challenge directed by the planning board during the public hearing on March 5th, 2024. And number three, completed parts two and three in the environmental assessment form. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Town of Webster planning board hereby determines that the proposed action is not, will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for the reasons set forth in the attached notice of determination of not significance. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster planning board is authorized to take all actions reasonable and necessary to file the negative, the negative declaration and discharges the Town of Webster planning board's responsibilities as lead agency for this action. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster planning board, based on the information and analysis above, the reference supporting documentation and discussions of the actions by the Town of Webster planning board is documented by the minutes for this meeting, that the proposed action will not result in significant environmental impacts. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster planning board, therefore makes a determination of not significance. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster planning board, based on above reasons, issues a negative declaration as evidence of its determination.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, Gary. Okay, this is the public hearing, we may get a floor area initially, you want to get a?
Yeah, we have a motion for a floor area pool. Uh, property located directly south of 925 Hard Road, property of the restaurant, subject to PRC, PRC 10. Subject to non-county water authority documents. Subject to determination of ZBA and request of variance. All improvements shall be constructed according to the specification of Town Webster. All road construction may be in accordance with the specification and regulations set forth by Town Webster. All segment will be compliant with the standards of the Town of Webster. Comply with all requirements of any state, county, or town agency. The prescribed lighting sites, landscaping, parking, and snow storage. And rules are subject to prior order. Okay, now, signage, can we make the reference about the signage?
Yes.
Okay, the, the drawings show signage Love That Chicken, that is being stricken. And Louisiana Famous Chicken, and the other signage being stricken. And also shows a vertical sign that says chickens will get the drive-throughs. That will not be a problem at all.
Did you, did you say about a letter of credit? They have to post a letter of credit.
Yeah, because we do post a letter of credit.
Okay, so it's a little credit, just a little second.
All right, well, can we get a second?
Second.
All right, have a second. Now, before, other signage, are there any entrance at all?
There will be some directional signs, they're noted on the, they're noted on the site plan. You'll see where it labels directional signage. I believe number 13 on the key there. So there'd be several of them, you know, the drive-through entrance and the entrance and exit, just to guide people around the site.
Okay, without looking at them, what do they say? I mean, hoping it's not saying chicken this way or direct.
No, it, it says drive-through. They do, I think they might have a question off the top of my head. Looking at them, I, no, I don't, I don't think they have anything other than entrance, drive-through, this way, you know, exit. The only thing is on the back side of the drive-through exit, it says thanks y'all. And I don't know if that's something that, on the back side of the exit ones. I think that's the only thing that might be somewhat branding because it's kind of in a souther, uh, I don't think so.
All right, I guess it's, you guys okay with that? You should be all right with that, right? All right, we have a motion in a second, you want to hold it?
Mr. Malka.
Aye.
Mr. Jardina.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Kossel.
Aye.
Mr. Mixal.
Aye.
Mrs. Lawman.
Aye.
Mr. Bishani.
All right. Okay, do you have a slide?
No, we have a motion for final approval for Popeyes Restaurant, south of 925 Hard Road. Subject to project认定made downs. Subject to voluntary conditions. Subject to ongoing structural difficulties. Subject to private property purchase approvals. Significant construction to improve in one year. As deemed by the planning board, expire on March 5th, 2025. Conditions of preliminary final approval are depicted on the cover page in the final design plans. I'm not the engineer. The proposed project should provide water certification and water management.
May I, Mark, put in two, Dave? It's on the plan, but I don't know if it's going to finally join the, the area, you know, proposed parking if necessary? Bank area?
Yeah, I mean, it's on, it's on the site plan, but we want to add that, yeah.
Okay, great.
So we'll short out.
Okay.
Engineer for proposed project should provide general specifications. The all proposed focus prepared is the planning board resolution of final approval for the specific requirements and information. A lot of credit to the town for projects and for the thinking engineers. Plan is subject to extension on the second. All standard facilities are to be constructed first. Subject to resolution of final plans. And plans are subject to the line as stated.
Okay, there's a motion. There's a motion in a second.
Second.
Have a second.
Mr. Malka.
Aye.
Mr. Jardina.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Kossel.
Aye.
Mr. Mixal.
Aye.
Mrs. Lawman.
Aye.
Mr. Bishani.
Aye.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you. You do. Can you dream of this?
I don't know about this from the information I have this year. Or was it more versus?
Yeah, it's not on tonight's sheet.
Oh, no, that's, that's, that's not, we're just following.
We're going to follow that, okay. Now, is there someone here from Giuliana's there? They're not here yet, okay, let's give that one then, and let's go. Pool?
Yep.
Admiralty Way Pool House and In Ground Pool located at 688 Admiralty Way. The applicant, Robert Newfeld, is requesting preliminary final site plan approval along with a public hearing associated with the construction of a 565 square foot pool house accessory structure on a 0.51 acre parcel located in a waterfront development district under sections 269-11, 350-25, and 350-36 of the code of the Town of Webster.
Can everyone hear me here? Good evening, I'm Aaron Byler with BME Associates. I'm here representing the applicant, Robert Newfeld, of Newfeld Custom Homes, who is requesting site plan approval for an in-ground pool, proposed pool house at 688 Admiralty Way. The in-ground pool will be 14 feet by 36 feet, and will have a 565 square foot, single-story pool house accessory structure with private water and private sanitary services extended from the existing parcel. We did need a rear setback variance from the zoning board to lobby construction of the pool house. They did grant that at their last.
Hold on, just one second. Josh, could you just move that screen down a little bit?
Sure.
There we go. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Nope, you're okay. So they did grant a rear setback variance at their last meeting. However, they only granted 30 feet versus the original 25 feet we requested. They just thought the additional five feet would just be beneficial to the neighbors, just fit in better with the neighborhood. And the plans will be updated to show everything with five feet closer. And the plans will be updated to show everything moved five feet closer to the home. Uh, the homeowner has also received approval from their HOA for the destruction of the pool and the pool house. Uh, and if the board has any questions on this, I'd be happy to answer.
Yeah, I was over there the other day, I was looking at it, you've got, is it existing paper patio?
Yeah, yeah.
There now?
So, so what the, the zoning board thought is just take out five feet of those existing pavers and just replace it with the concrete perimeter of the pool. So in essence, they're not losing any patio area, they're saying.
It's too bad you have to do that.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, but the, we didn't see a big deal on it, and the zoning board just, they really wanted that big.
Because you're quite a distance in the back of the, the pool, the proposed pool house, they're going back, and there's trees in there, everything.
Yeah.
Um. And look at that, what could, is there any possible way of changing the design? We're not even going to tear that up, that's, I think that's a, that's a shame, yeah.
That, that was my first thought, but, yeah.
Um.
There are two, uh, there're like lamp holes, like brick, brick lamp holes.
I know, I know, it was a beautiful setup there.
Yeah.
Um. What would happen if you took five feet off of that proposed pool house, and instead of that angle, just made it square? You know, you get your shaming square footage, you know, design it differently?
Mm-hmm.
Without having to tear that patio off, I, I think that's terrible, my opinion anyways, that's after looking at it.
No, no, what corner are you talking about?
Uh, right there, see where the pool house is?
Okay, I see where it is.
Okay, what's the width of it, I don't have the dimension, I think it was like?
It's seventeen feet at that angle.
Okay, go, go down below, the lower part, right there, right there, that wall, right there.
That one is nineteen and a half.
Nineteen, so if you took off five feet, you'd have fourteen feet. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And then square that. You have your square, instead of that angle. Uh, just a thought, I mean, I'm looking at it, and I'm like.
I do, you know, I do have a, a quick markup here of the whole thing moved five feet, if you wanted to take a look at it.
You do?
Yeah, just because we didn't get a chance to update the plans. I just don't, I don't think you square that off really.
You know, for what?
You can see the red, red outline, because everything shifted. I don't know how set the homeowner is on that pool house design, we can talk with them, maybe we can just figure it, but.
I don't, I don't know if the homeowner would prefer to do something like that.
Yeah, we haven't had any discussions with altering that pool house design.
Yeah.
We've just always gone by, you know, we need a video. But our zoning board wanted it, essentially.
Yeah. Yeah, because you've got posts out there and.
Yeah, yeah.
Just.
It is unfortunate, I mean, we did, after the zoning board meeting, we did reach out to the homeowner, you know, just to make sure that was okay, and they were, they were fine, but.
They were okay with?
That's, that's, I mean, they probably would prefer not to.
Yeah.
But, but that's what they needed to do to get the zoning board variance.
Okay, and, and that's the design for the pool house they want, is most of it?
That's the, that's the old, that's the current and only design I have ever seen, I don't know, there are alternate designs that could be like that.
Now, I'm sure they're, the exterior is probably matching the house and stuff.
Yes, I would assume, we, I don't actually have, uh, samples of the.
Yeah, well, that's very close.
I'm sure it's going to fit right in. Definitely.
Does anyone have any questions here?
I have, I have one question, it's just a.
Yeah.
I have a preliminary final segment, it's an accessory structure. It's written preliminary final segment for an accessory structure, right? This one is just an accessory structure?
What's the question?
The way you heard it, uh.
It's written preliminary final segment. It's just meaning the accessory structure. So, right, it's a preliminary final segment, it hasn't just accessory structure.
Um, well, they're one and the same, I guess.
According to the, uh, chaplain's statement.
I'm not quite sure what you mean. We typically advertise that just like that every time.
Well, what we're going to do is we're going to give preliminary final approval for accessory building.
Right.
We're not giving preliminary segment for one.
Oh, I see, because accessory structures are exempt from the preliminary, or from the concept, if you still have to.
From the segment, yeah.
I, I think we're, I'm not quite sure I understand it, I, I don't think it's really an issue.
Well, I just want to be sure we're, we're doing the right thing, this is.
So you're getting hung up on the site plan warning?
Right.
Well, they're submitting a site plan, so it's, I guess. It is actually a site plan modification with the pool and everything, it's not just the structure.
Okay.
You have a pool involved too, so it is a segment, modification.
That's true.
That's right, you're correct, if I'm wrong, wasn't it the five hundred square foot threshold that they kind of push us into requirements of, of the pool?
Correct.
A little bit, yeah.
Yes. Okay? All right, uh, anyway, any other, any questions or? It's a nice, it's a nice area, the yard is quite large, fits in there really nice, it's.
Nice design.
Yeah, the building, the structure they're proposing is very nice, yeah. All right, anybody, any, guys roll a given?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a public hearing.
Oh, yeah, it's a public hearing. Anybody, wish you to speak, I don't see anybody coming up, so.
I guess not.
So we'll pull up the public hearing, bring it back up. Derek, my question.
The town of Webster Plan Board consider request by applicant, Robert Newfeld, to construct a five hundred and four square foot pool, five hundred and sixty-five square foot pool house accessory structure located at sixteen eighty, Edward Way, on a zero point five-one acre parcel having S P L number zero six three point one three dash one dash one three. The planning board classifies proposed action as a type-two action under section six seventeen point five C twelve of the state environmental quality review regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
Do you have a period of motion?
Second.
You have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. And, so supporters, do you want to make a motion for?
We have a making motion for preliminary approval. Admiralty Way Pool House and In Ground Pool, preliminary site plan approval. Subject to PRC patents. Subject to, uh, non-organic water therapy patents if applicable. Subject to determination of Z B A for requesting variances. All improvements should be constructed according to the specification of the town of Webster. While set work is to be in compliance with the standards of the town of Webster. Comply with all requirements of any state, county, or town agency. Approvals are subject to, um, the two minutes, six minutes.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Do you have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Byler?
Do you have a motion? They're moving the applicant five feet, should be done.
I think he's got the, the drawing, you, you just showed that, you're right, right?
Well, the, the drawings you currently have are old, are outdated, so I really will need.
The one you showed is that, that's the one you're going to present?
Yes, yeah, the one with, with the red mark, that's what's going to be.
So you, you'll draft that up, turn that in.
Correct.
So, subject to, uh, that drawing, the modification of that drawing, right?
Yeah, it's pretty much, it's pretty much what, what they're showing, the only thing is they're shifting it five feet closer to the house and taking out five feet of their nice patio.
Correct.
Yeah, that's okay, that's all right, isn't it, Josh? That works for you. You need to get that drawing that you just presented.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's a motion, do you have a second?
Do you have a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so we're good.
Make a motion for final approval, subject to project review committee, patents. Subject to preliminary public conditions, subject to all applicable common pleas. Subject to private public works approvals, significant construction should occur within one year, as deemed by the planning board, expire on March fifth, two thousand twenty five. Conditions of preliminary final approval are depicted on the current page and plans. Approvals are subject to modification of drawings.
Just, no idea, no idea, well, just quick, as presented, subject to the applicant showing a revised drawing with the entire structure moved five feet closer to the house.
That's what I said.
That's what I said. That's good, you like that, okay? All right, you have a motion?
It's a motion.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're good, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Uh, Juliana's signage? Yeah, Juliana's signage is, is that you was it? Oh, okay. Um, all right, well, anyways, Josh, you can explain, it's, Josh met them there, thought the meeting was a different date.
Yeah, so there was a, a mix-up with, um, Skylight Signs, they inadvertently thought that tonight's meeting was on a different date, and they have conflict. So they reached out to me, uh, this afternoon, and indicated that the salon owner was going to try and make appearance at tonight's meeting, um, which is why we switched the order of the agenda items. It wasn't a guarantee, I think it's safe to say at this point that they're most likely not going to be able to make it here tonight. Um, but I did discuss the sign with them, it does appear to meet all of the code requirements. I tried to ask a couple of questions that I anticipated the board might ask about the particular sign, uh, to get clarification. And, um, I can inform you that basically the sign is, um, is consisting of a, a black vinyl, um, material over the channel letters, and they're internally lit with white LED lights. So the sign during the day appears, as you see it on the screen, with black letters, and then at night, it's internally lit. And the black does shield, uh, it's not a bright white light that shines out, um, it, it does tone down the brightness of the white lights. But other than that, it, it meets the code requirements, and, uh, if they weren't able to make it to tonight, they respectfully requested if the board would approve the sign in the absence of the applicant being present tonight.
So the white, the white part that's being lit is only that spot that's just behind the Juliana's sign, and the words, right?
No.
It's not the whole thing, there isn't?
Um, each, each letter is individually lit internally.
Yeah.
Um, so the, the, the raceway that the sign letters are on will not be lit, just the letters themselves, so again, because of the black vinyl that they have on the letters during the daylight, it'll look just how it shows with black lettering.
Yeah.
And then at night, just the letters that you see would be internally lit. Um, so I asked them, you know, will they look white, and he said, well, they will have a white appearance, but it's not a bright white shining because of the black vinyl, perforated vinyl over it. So, I told them I would relay this information to the board, and, um, I didn't make any promises. Basically, it's up to the board on how they'd like to handle this, um, particular situation.
Easy way to do that, David, is, uh, what we do with a sign, we usually put in there anyways. It's just the figures, we do it later, that's it.
Right.
That's all, that should cover it, that's all they're proposing, but, but just to make sure that's all there is.
Yeah, I, I didn't want to see the whole, the white thing.
Right, yeah.
Right.
So just, when I motion, go ahead, you're on a roll. You have to see her, yeah.
What else happened?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, town of Webster Plan Board consider request by applicant, Ralph Darnes of Skylight Signs to install a thirty-four square foot building on sign for Juliana Salon located at nineteen Ridge Road within Webster Plaza, on a seventeen point zero-three acre parcel having S P L number zero seven nine point one five dash one dash three point one. The planning board classifies proposed action as a type-two action under section six seventeen point five C two of the state environmental quality review regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Second, Derek? Do you have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, do you have a motion for the sign, just, we're busy standing there.
Do you have a motion for the, uh, sign, Juliana Salon, nineteen Ridge Road? Making understanding that, um, when lit at night, the only, anything that shows is the letters itself.
Yeah, that's it. Do you have a second?
The signage presented.
Oh, second.
Do you have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, but then, then that's all we're concerned about, the sign, because you see the picture, I'll just so you know, that's all. Yeah, I guess that's it, folks, thanks for coming in.
The last slide is on America's.
Yeah, Brian. Is that for that last slide? No. No, just, that, that's, that's it.
You're doing pretty good with the last thing?
Oh, why are you mentioning that, you know, I sent you guys to know about, um, especially that last year, the velter. I know, some are sending and some are sending, you know, responding to the, the, you know, reviewing and stuff, we got to do that, that's part of what we got to do. So, please, send your, I mentioned to, uh, to Kathy, so she can, and that's a primary one, is that, uh, what's that?
Do you have a drawing on this?
Um, for?
For some, you know, from the paper.
Yeah.
Can I see it?
Anyways, one concern we've got is that regarding that velter, just, you know, do that. Anything you see, because we're, that's, you know, she's got illegible and so on and so forth. Just give her any comments that you see that, just to clarify. Because that's a mission that's ongoing with it.
I guess that's it?
Yeah, that's it, dude.
Did you say, do you want to get all the meetings?
You want to do the.
Uh, make a motion to approve the meeting, the minutes are American.
February sixth meeting.
Okay, I'll send you there.
Oh, gee, tell me. Was that on? We were both.
Aye.
Tell me, tell me.
I'm staying on this.
The last sign was on the legal notice.
It was on the legal notice, it wasn't on the agenda that we had in front of us, so the applicant is here.
Oh, it is that?
Yeah.
It was on the legal notice, it just didn't show it by the agenda, it was at the door.
Oh, okay.
Is that the only on the salon?
No, it's just on, it's the sign.
The one that you were going to bring his hair down to the meeting, you said, out of no care, that's, uh.
No. It's for the, to, to the.
Do we have anything on it?
Oh, that's. To the court. Yeah, that's the one that I downloaded from the computer, yeah, and I, I just raised a question a while ago.
All right, you had it there?
Oh, okay. Right.
Yeah, we have a paper work on, you have.
Yeah, to the court, Legree versus side studio side. Are we, are we back in, are we back in session?
Yeah.
Okay. To the court, Legree versus studio sign located at ten twenty-eight Ridge Road, Suite one twenty-five. The applicant, Aaron Farente, is requesting sign approval associated with the installation. is requesting sign approval associated with the installation of a thirty-one point five square foot building mound of a sound sign to reflect the business within the town center plaza on a nine point one acre parcel located in a high-density commercial district under section two sixty-five dash seven A of the town of the town of Webster.
Go ahead, use a little story.
Um, so we're actually in the plaza right now, we're just moving to a bigger space, yeah, we're expanding. Um, we've been there since October of twenty-one, and we're just moving into, um, a bigger space. We've just seen a bigger lit sign because our space is a lot bigger, so people can see us towards the back of the plaza.
That's, that's right, right around, okay.
Right next to Cold Stone.
When you go in there, it says, that's like a lobby, isn't it?
Um, no, that's not, that's not that space that you're thinking of, um, it's one right next to Cold Stone. It used to be a retail clothing store, it was twenty-one years ago.
Okay.
So, to answer your question, yes, it will be our lobby, but.
No, it's a signed lit, or how is it?
Yes, it will be lit, all the letters individually, and then, like, the black underneath is like a pillbox that'll be lit.
So just the letters are lit then, right?
Yep, and then the pillbox underneath is lit too.
Okay, anybody, any issues with that? Size-wise, it's okay, Josh?
Uh, yes, they're permitted thirty-four square feet, and they're both saying about thirty-one and a half.
Alright, anybody? Come on, there's something, you can say. Yeah, I, I'm gonna do a secret, right?
Town of Webster Plan Board considers request by applicant, Aaron Ferente, to install a thirty-one one five square foot building mound of a sound sign for the, to the court, Legree versus studio located at one zero two eight Ridge Road within the town center plaza, on a nine point one acre parcel having ESPN number zero seven nine point one two dash one dash two zero. The planning board classifies proposed action as a type two action under section six seventeen point five C two of the State Environmental Quality Review Regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
Okay, motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright. You have a motion for the sign?
Go ahead, John.
Okay, I'll make a motion for the to the court, Legree versus studio sign located at ten twenty-six, um, Ridge Road Suite one twenty-five, uh, for a building mound sign, uh, as presented.
Okay, you have a motion, do you have a second? Do you have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you so much, I appreciate it, sorry for any confusion, so, thank you guys for squeezing it in, I appreciate it.
Good luck with your new spot.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you for all sitting down. So you go do that, and I'm gonna go sit.
Yeah, there's several behind us, I was in there on the sixth, and the other one was. The tricky, it's, oh, the way they approve it.
The other one's, the next one, uh, discovered.